Good evening and welcome to the September twenty four, two thousand and twenty five regular Hydrant Planning Commission meeting. I am Chair Thompson. Tonight, Hydrant Planning Mission, Mission Meeting is being brought to you by Zoom. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight. Um, let's do a roll call. Commissioners, please have your microphones turned on for the roll call. Uh, please call the roll call.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Cuse?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Here.
Commissioner Nice?
Here.
Commissioner Perez?
Here.
Chair Thompson?
Here.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. The Planning Commission meets in person and utilizes the Zoom platform for remote participation. I will do my best to recognize commissioners in the order in which hands are raised. After being recognized, you may then ask your question. Our first item of business tonight is public appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission about issues of concern, except items requiring a public hearing, any quasi judicial matters or campaign related matter. I will note that there is one public hearing related to permanent regulations for temporary uses and structures. Um, I don't think that's correct, is it?
Uh, no, it should be the omnibus legislation related to permit streamlining and housing production.
That's what I thought. I, uh, I think that this just was a typo in here. Uh, later this evening and ask that you hold your comments if they pertain to the hearing. Staff, is there anyone who has signed up for public appearances as of four P M. today who wishes to address the commission?
Uh, we did have a person signed up, but I don't see them in the audience or the waiting room.
Yeah, they were kind of a maybe. They asked to be put on the list, but they weren't sure if they could make it. So I think we can move along.
Okay, I thought there were two.
Um, there is another person that I see in the participant list. I know Deb had them marked down um to speak during the hearing, but I think that might actually be incorrect. So perhaps we should check in with Terry Long and see if they were hoping to speak now.
Something just flashed on the screen that says someone was raising their hand.
Yeah, I'm thinking that might be for the reason that I just brought up.
Okay.
Uh, Terry, can you hear us okay?
Hi, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Are you making a public appearance for the public hearing or a public appearance for the meeting?
Oh, yeah, I started signing up for the three minutes.
Thank you. I'll promote you to panelist. Moving them over now, Chair.
Okay. Um, the first regular item of regular business.
Here.
Oh, is she going to speak now?
I am moving, uh, Terry over to speak, yes.
Okay, that's all right.
Hello, hi. Oh, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
Right, now let me.
If you want to turn your camera on, we'll be able to see you as well.
Okay.
There we go.
At home, sorry.
You can go ahead when you're ready. Thank you.
Okay. Hello, City Planning Commission. So my name is Terry Long. Uh, so I bought on, I know home on the island. Two years ago, and I've been living here since about two years. Uh, we're looking to build an A D U and a modest twenty five hundred square feet home. Um, so I really appreciate the city, you know, in finding way to streamline the review and approval process for the permit and everything. Um, therefore, I, but a bit of recent code changes to the development standard to accommodate, you know, like A D Us and other housing changes for the, um, the, the new development plan and also the comprehensive plan. I, I found that there's a lot of changes that, um, the intent seems to be for, you know, to increase housing in the city, but it actually make it more difficult to build in the city. Um, I can highlight a few example. Um, the recently with the packing changes, you know, uh, e- even with this, uh, meeting right here, I saw a lot of changes to the parking requirement that now require that the A D U have packing, you know, one A D U require one packing. But at the same time, the city does not allow any, um, relief on the lot coverage, uh, or exemption to the parking requirement, meaning you're making it more difficult for people to meet the existing code. Meaning, you know, now you have less room because you have to have parking, but you don't allow for that. Um, so I would appreciate if the city can look into, you know, either provide, now that you want packing for the A D U and packing for the development, why don't you provide some exemption where, you know, you allow either an increase to the lot coverage by a certain percent or by allowing, you know, two hundred square feet for the parking spot so that people can still meet the existing code and also meeting the parking requirement that you're trying to make us meet. That's one point that I wanted to bring up and see hopefully that the city can take into consideration. The second point I wanted to bring up is that I was looking at the, um, the A D U for the gross floor area allowance. You basically allow up to five percent, uh, for if you build an A D U. And I attend a few city meeting that, that I thought that was the intent, but when I actually read the detail, the five, uh, five percent allowance for an increase to the gross floor area is actually only for attached A D U. But it's like, it's not applicable to the detached A D U. So I was like, why? You know, I, I was wondering, is that a mistake or maybe it's intentional? So if the city can look into that, that'll be great as well.
That's it.
And that's all I have, just the two points. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is that the only speaker tonight?
Yes, Chair.
Okay. Now, the first item of regular business is to review and consider approving the September ten special meeting minutes. Commissioners, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, there's a motion by Vice Chair Gibson and a second by Commissioner Perez to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, staff, please conduct a roll call.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Cuse?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nice?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, moving on to PCB twenty five dash seventeen, part one, Public Hearing on Omnibus Ordinants Related to Permanent Regulations for Housing Production and Permanent Streamlining. The second item of regular business is Planning Commission Agenda Bill twenty five seventeen, Omnibus Ordinants Related to Permanent Regulations for Housing Production and Permit Streamlining. This public hearing is to receive public comments on the Omnibus Ordinants Related to Permanent Regulations for Housing Production and Permit Streamlining. Uh, no individuals apparently wish to make comments at this time. So the public hearing opened, uh, at six oh nine and is now closed at six oh nine P M. This concludes the public hearing for this evening. The hearing is continued to the October eight Special Planning Commission meeting at approximately six P M, wherein the public will have another opportunity to speak either in person or via Zoom. The second part of the agenda bill PCB twenty five dash seventeen is to receive a presentation and consider approving the non substantive amendments as shown in the comment matrix dated September twenty three, two thousand and twenty five, and request staff resolve any overlapping or undrafted proposed amendments. Please welcome Principal Platter, Planner Adam Zach.
Thank you. Um, I've got a couple of slides for us tonight. Um, may I share my screen? Um, so tonight we'll be conducting the first part of our public hearing on omnibus legislation related to permanent regulations for her housing product, production and permit streamlining. Um, this has been an ongoing project that has been before the planning commission since July of this year. Um, so we're picking up some work that's already been done. Our purpose tonight is to conclude that or to, um, hold that public hearing, the first part of the public hearing and gather comments on that, um, and then resolve the comments that the planning commission provided, um, during the comment period. Uh, first, some background, um, for the folks that may be joining us for the first time here. Um, it, the Washington State Legislature has adopted many bills in the recent years um, that require local jurisdictions, cities and counties to amend their development code. Um, and since two thousand and twenty one, the city has, uh, adopted several interim ordinances to maintain compliance with those legislative changes at the state level. Um, and those interim ordinances, um, remain in effect to today, um, and they do require renewal. Um, they're, they're temporary in nature, so every six months, um, they do need to be renewed. Um, and this project is more or less to resolve those interim ordinances, um, and get those adopted um, to, so that we can, um, end the cycle of constant renewal for them. Um, all of the ordinances, uh, the interim ordinances that we're taking into consideration here, um, address, uh, changes to the state law that relate to housing, um, and permit review times. Um, so they're all, they all kind of fit in that same category. Um, and as a result, many of the sections of the city code are amended by more than one interim ordinance. And so by doing this as an omnibus legislation, it'll give the city the opportunity to, um, review those, uh, altogether and make sure that they're all consistent as we adopt permanent regulations. Um, this'll, this is part of a project that was approved by the city council or the scope for this project rather was approved by the city council. And that's the scope and schedule that was approved, um, aims for adoption of these amendments by the end of the year. Um, what that means for the planning commission is that we're looking to conclude your work, um, by October, um, so that the, uh, city council can pick those up, uh, before the end of the year. Um, one main difference between the draft that's before you tonight and the draft that was considered on the tenth is that some of the amendments relating to House Bill twelve twenty and the shelter transitional emergency and permanent supportive housing, um, are withdrawn from the draft. Um, after the comments from the planning commission, uh, at the last session, um, and reviewing how we might do that, we decided that we can roll that into a larger affordable housing legislative project that we have on, on the schedule for next year. Um, and so we can kind of can consider all of that together. What that means, um, in, in effect is that those, the interim ordinances that relate to, um, the step housing will remain in effect, and then if we have to, we can renew those, but we wanted to roll that into that larger affordable housing work. Um, so you'll see specifically, um, sections in Mercer Island City Code nineteen oh six zero eight zero. Um, A and B were removed from the draft and we'll, we'll pick those up again in the new year. Um, there was a planning commission comment period on the draft. Um, the draft was initially made available on August eleventh. Um, the public had the access to the draft and could submit comments. We didn't receive any public comments on the draft during that time. Um, but then by the end of last week, the planning commission had submitted a hundred and four, uh, comments. Those were provided in a matrix, um, that was distributed to the planning commission, uh, yesterday and added to the agenda. So if the public wants to see that comment matrix, there's a link on the agenda for tonight's meeting, um, so you can see the whole comment matrix. Um, of those one hundred and four comments, thirty of them were questions. Uh, forty seven were categorized as non substantive amendments. Um, and then twenty seven of those amendments were categorized as substantive amendments. And our, our plan for tonight is to resolve, um, the non substantive and substantive amendments, um, through your discussion tonight. With the non substantive amendments, um, there's a recommended motion in the planning commission bill that would, would take care of those non substantive amendments more or less in one fell swoop. Um, if you were to make that motion and approve it tonight, um, I would incorporate those non substantive amendments into the drafts, um, for you to consider on the eighth. That'll give the, the public an opportunity to comment at the next, uh, portion of the public hearing so we can gather some comments on those proposed amendments, um, but they'll get incorporated into the draft. And then because we're working on a shorter timeline to get these, uh, to get your recommendation to the city council, um, the substantive amendments are recommended to be placed into a planning commission parking lot. And the idea there is that those substantive amendments are things that the planning commission would need more time to discuss, um, and consider. Um, that our, our current process probably isn't going to give you enough time to address most of those. So we can put them in the parking lot and then consider those, um, at a later date. Um, essentially giving you the opportunity after this process to consider how you might want to request the, the city council to give you direction, um, to, to take up those amendments in the future. I already kind of went over that. I mean, the, the main purpose of the parking lot is to keep those ideas around. Uh, we don't want to lose them just because we're on a, a shorter timeline here. Um, but it'll give, uh, it'll give us a chance to come back to them when, um, when we can, um, probably in, in the middle part of next year, um, prior to the docketing process. Um, just a quick note on schedule and next steps. Um, as I mentioned, um, we've said it a couple of times, the planning commission or the public hearing has been continued to October eighth. So any of the amendments that, um, you vote on tonight, um, and incorporate into the draft, the, the public will have the opportunity to comment on those, um, at the public hearing prior to you making a recommendation at the city council. Um, and then, uh, we're hoping with the conclusion of your recommendation on the eighth, we'll get this to the city council in November, again with them, uh, aiming to take action on this before the end of the year, um, and get it, uh, adopted. Um, the, the nice thing about getting this all taken care of before the end of the year is it'll give us a chance to clear the decks on some of this, these things that have been holding or hanging around for a while because we have a pretty stacked agenda for next year. And so this will give us an opportunity to kind of, uh, get some of that renewal work out of the way. So I do have some recommended motions. I guess before I get into that, uh, just a note on process. So the, the motions were crafted in a way that you could more or less just take one action and take care of all of the non substantive actions or amendments, and then you could take a second action and take care of any of the substantive amendments. Um, if there are non substantive amendments that you'd like to discuss further or pull out from that motion, you can reference the log number to pull those out. If there are not, if there are substantive amendments that you don't want to place in the parking lot, you can reference those log numbers to pull them out of the, the recommended motion, and then you can discuss those further if you'd like. Um, so they're not, the recommended motions aren't necessarily set in stone if there are some of those items that you'd like to discuss further, um, prior to taking an action. So if you, that concludes my presentation. I do have the slides with the motion language if, if that would be helpful. Um, but I, I can put that up.
Yes, Commissioner Perez?
Uh, just a quick question, Adam. Um, upon, upon review of your responses to, to specifically a couple of comments that I made, uh, there are about five of the substantive that I'm willing to withdraw. When will be a good time to, to, uh, make a notification of that?
So you could, we could withdraw those when making that recommended motion number two.
Okay.
Um, the other thing, because the parking lot isn't, isn't like a firm decision one way or the other, we could keep them in, in the parking lot, and then when we come back to it, you could withdraw them at that time. If you've had some time to think about it, it's up to you, um, either remove them from the motion now or we can remove them before we get to the, the next step in the process, but whatever works for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, Vice Chair.
Just piggybacking off of that, I, I would recommend that we try to take as much off the table as we can today and, and keep that, uh, parking lot list as skinny as, as we can.
All right. Um, this is Chair Thompson. Uh, I've sent out an email earlier. Some of the conceptual, uh, problems I'm having with this is we are removing the design commission. Uh, but we're not removing any of the discretion, uh, that is the heart of H B twelve twenty. Um, and I do understand why there was discretion for non residentially zoned properties. Um, I just, uh, a- at some point, we're going to have to address that discretion. Um, parking lots, uh, you know, we were supposed to revisit the residential development code in two thousand and twenty. Uh, and God knows when we're going to get there. So I'm just, you know, are we going to get to the substantive amendments here, some of them, uh, the discretion? I mean, I think Nazim and Commissioner Perez, uh, did a lot of work. It's, it's very helpful. You know, they're architects and they're doing this. And I, I've appeared before the hearing examiner Galt, and he's a lawyer like I am. And he's already made it clear that he, he doesn't really know what he's doing, uh, when he does design review. He's, he doesn't, he's not going to apply discretion like the design commission did. So at some point, that's, we're going to have to get back to that. And as you know, as I pointed out, one of my big problems, uh, is the enormous discretion that this gives for parking minimums. And the reason that really kind of bothers me is the C B D recently held that nineteen point oh four point oh one now applies to the residential zone. Where I don't think the language says that. If, if it didn't apply to the residential zone, I'd be a lot more comfortable because I think that there needs to be some discretion, you know, for the architects and stuff in the town center and P B Z. Uh, but if we're going to start taking these big parking variances and, and wide discretionary powers and apply it to the residential development code, that's something that, that concerns me and that I'd want to know that we're going to address next year. Because as you know, you reframed my questions or my proposed amendments where I said I want to remove the discretion. Uh, if we're going to have parking minimums, we have parking minimums. But that's mostly because I'm concerned about the residential zone. And then you said, well, we'll move the, the discretion from the, the code official to the hearing examiner. It's almost better in front of the code official because the C B D is more talented and more sophisticated when it comes to design discretion. So that doesn't solve mine. I mean, I'm going to ask that mine be put into the parking lot. But I just want to know that, you know, we're going to get back to these, especially the, the, the parking ones, uh, to clarify what zones they apply to. That's my number one concern. And then how we're going to deal with, uh, parking discretion.
Chair, could you explain what you meant? Minute or so ago, you said something about the provisions in, for the P B Z zone parking requirements applying to residential and that the C B D had made a decision about that. I didn't, don't know what you're referring to there.
Um, in the public hearing that was held before, uh, hearing examiner Galt on the, uh, Herzl project. So Herzl, uh, has a B zone property and they want to build a school and office building on that property. But they want to shift all their parking onto the adjacent Herzl residentially zoned property that has a cup and make it cooperative parking. Um, and i- in order to do that, the only way it works because of their impervious surface limits, they can't enlarge their parking lot. Uh, the C B D in their report to Galt stated that oh four oh one oh, uh, applies to residential properties and allows them, the, the applicant or the C B D to use those, uh, parking variances on that residentially zoned property. So that's where it comes from.
Through a conditional use permit and part of a shared parking agreement.
Right.
Those are, yeah, important caveats there.
Well, yes, uh huh.
And I think there was a second part of your question earlier, um, about, um, the timing of when we could do those things. So you can place something in the parking lot tonight. You could, you could propose an amendment to the code tonight. Um, if you wanted to change or otherwise alter that, that standard, we could do that. You could do that by motion tonight or put it in the parking lot, sorry. That's your, those are kind of your timing options, um, of when, when you might want to do those. I see, uh, our city attorney Kim has raised her hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, um, in your discussion about things being moved to the hearing examiner. Um, hearing examiner Galt is actually not an attorney. He was, um, a planner by trade before he became a hearing examiner.
Thanks. Um, so if you'd like, like I said, I could put up the recommended motions if that would be helpful right now. If you wanted to take care of the non substantive amendments, um, first, let me share my screen. Uh, yeah.
Should we first perhaps deal with the questions? Uh, what do we do with the questions?
So the questions, if there's further clarification needed, um, I'd be happy to answer any of those questions now. Otherwise, no action from the planning commission is necessary on the questions.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Nice, I know that you had, uh, several questions. Do you need further clarification?
Uh, when there were, there were some items that, uh, Commissioner Perez made that, uh, overlapped with mine. How do you, what's the process for resolving the difference in, you know, language there? Are you going to make an attempt and then distribute it and next time we comment on, uh, your draft?
Yes. Um, so what, what I'll prepare after this meeting, um, those amendments that you want to incorporate into the draft, um, I'll get those in there and distribute that to the planning commission. And I'll add notation in there too with the log numbers of where those amendments came from. And so you'll be able to see in the draft how I navigated resolving those. You'll see the language of the motion actually directs me to do that, um, because there are a couple of places where um, amendments weren't necessarily drafted, but were talked about, and I can, I can take care of that. And then we can resolve those on the eighth, um, if there's like some slight massaging that needs to happen. Yeah.
Commissioner Perez, do you have any questions about your questions?
Uh, n- no, nothing regarding the questions. I've had a chance to go through, um, look at both the non substantive and, uh, and questions, and I think I'm, I'm in a good place. Thank you.
Commissioner, how about you, Vice Chair Gibson?
Uh, nothing for me.
Okay. Um, now, everybody, there's, there's, since there's a hundred and four, I'm assuming that everyone has reviewed and is, um, comfortable with which of theirs has been designated, uh, non substantive and substantive. So, um, if not, I think this would probably be the time, uh, to ask that they, if you have them and they're not, they're labeled non substantive, but you want them to be substantive so that they, uh, I guess go into a parking lot, um, because maybe the language was changed by the C B D. Now, now's the time to do that. Commissioner Perez?
Um, uh, yeah, trying to think about how, how to best do this in a really clear way. There, there, there are a couple of non substantive, uh, items that I would like to, um, dig into a little bit. Uh, and it seems like the, really the only time to do that is prior to, um, collectively voting and accepting the, uh, the non substantive.
Right, and that's what we're going to be doing here. So.
Yeah.
Uh, don't you think this would probably be a good idea? Um, I don't know if we need a motion to change the non substantive to substantive, but there needs to be some direction and you can move them over to the substantive.
The, the shortest path from A to B is if we make the recommended motion number one, um, Commissioner Perez could make that motion and then highlight the log numbers that you'd like to discuss further, and we can pull those out and say, you can say logs X, Y, and Z for further discussion. We'll do all, that would take care of all the rest of them, and then logs X, Y, and Z would be further discussion. And if, if at the end of that, you decided that logs X, Y, and Z are non substantive, you can make basically the same motion again and tell me to incorporate logs X, Y, and Z. You can decide that, that way.
So it's not a non substantive substantive differentiation solely. We could actually have a, a, remove non substantive uh, and, and then discuss.
Correct.
Okay, excellent.
The one catch with the way the, the process that I just described. The one catch with the way the the process that I just described is that anything that is. That is not pulled out for further discussion is is resolved.
Okay, great.
That's also expedient, so it might not be a bad thing, but. Um, I will, uh, I'll I'll share my screen again just so that you have that uh motion if you wanted, if you felt so inclined.
Thank you.
All right, uh, does anybody want to make the motion that's shown on the screen there?
Uh, Chair, I would like to make a motion um with a uh with an addition to remove a few. Uh, non-substantive for discussion later in this in this meeting.
So make the motion then.
And then amend it slightly.
Yes.
Okay, uh, so if if I can make the motion for um, you know, motion number one, move to approve the non-substantive amendments as shown in the common matrix dated September twenty third, twenty twenty five. And request staff resolve any overlapping or undrafted proposed amendments with the following exceptions.
No, we'll we'll get a second.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, so uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Perez uh to approve the non-substantive amendments. We have a second from Vice Chair uh Gibson, and now we're open for discussion and. Uh, Commissioner Perez, why don't we start with you?
Thank you very much, uh, Chair. So if I can refer to this in terms of the log number, if I may. Um, so there there is going to be quite a bit crossover between Commissioner Nice and myself. Uh, log number thirty three would be one to please uh discuss. That is non-substantive.
Uh, I I wonder if it'd be easier to work off of yours and then we'll have Commissioner Nice do his. Okay, you know, uh, so that's what I'm thinking. You have your start on log number seventy five.
Yes.
And rather than trying to scroll back and forth, which of these uh would you either uh? That are listed as non-substantive. That you think that you would want to make substantive and put in the parking lot or um. That that's basically where we are. We're just basically focusing on the non-substantive right now.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, from. Log number seventy five to log number one oh four, uh, interestingly, I have no questions regarding the non-substantive on my end.
Okay, so you're comfortable leaving them non-substantive. So based uh, you know, the non-substantive, um. If I'm correct, Adam, uh, staff believes that they can incorporate those into the next draft. So um, they're basically are resolved and then they don't have to worry about them again, right?
Correct, yeah. So if if. If they don't need any further discussion, we can do them all with that one fell swoop. Uh, yeah.
Okay, uh, let's move now to Commissioner Nice and yours.
Just have a question. Um, a couple of my items, a few of them had like a question and. Um, I think you proposed some amendments. Uh, is it best to just wait for your draft of that? And if I wanted to include little tweaks, just do it in the next round rather than dissect tiny little things in this meeting?
Yes, um, anything that has a non-substantive in the in the table, I will get in there. The question was just. A couple of yours had had both, so, yeah.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Akus, do you have any comments on any of the proposed amendments that are non-substantive?
No, I think staff did a great job responding.
Okay, Vice Chair. Gibson?
Uh, nothing for me.
Um, okay, um, this is the chair. What I would like to do is um take uh log numbers sixty eight. Uh, seventy. Seventy one. And uh seventy four. And move those to substantive. Because um, what staff is proposing as a non-substantive, switching it from the code official to the Hearing Examiner. Is is not what my intent was. My intent was to eliminate the discretion uh or or focus in on that, not just shifted. So. We move those to substantive. Um, I'm I'm good to go on that because I don't. Think I have any other.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that?
Yes.
So so. In in the common response, uh, Chair Thompson. Describes, he just wants to get rid of the variances and have an absolute parking requirement without. Discretion for variances from that. Uh. Is is there a reason that we can't just do that instead of uh? Changing this to the Hearing Examiner? If you would like to make that recommendation at the City Council, they could consider your recommendation on that. Yes, you could do that tonight.
But we would do that in the substantive portion.
Right, you could do it, you could just make those individually with that direction to strike those um from the next draft and. We can incorporate that in. Now, instead of putting it in the parking lot, because I I'm assuming, and I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have, there's no additional study or. Requirement to set what that parking, you know, to get rid of the variance, I should say. Correct, those are, those are existing provisions in the code and when we received the direction uh to undertake this project. It was primarily to do two things, to take care of those things that were interim regulations. And then um resolve the the couple of other things like the Design Commission removal um and the House Bill nineteen ninety eight. Um, and so none of those three things that we were directed to address with this project touched on the parking minimums or removing that variance. Um, and so they weren't proposed to be struck, but certainly the the Planning Commission now. Can make that recommendation if that's what the Planning Commission would like to do. Okay. Oh, I guess. My take on this is I I agree with the proposed amendment to to strike it, so I would support it if uh Chair Thompson. Made that amendment.
We'll do that when we move to the substantive motions. We're just gonna, we now have everything that is non-substantive. Anybody who wanted to move anything out of that has, and now we can pass a motion.
That as as a, sorry, as a procedural item here, what we'll need to do is we'll we'll need a motion. Um, to take sixty eight, logs sixty eight, seventy, seventy one, and seventy four. Um, and make those substantive. Um, then we can pull those out for the next round of discussion, but we need a motion, a second, and a vote.
All right, I'll I'll make the motion uh since it's mine. Um, I move that log numbers sixty eight. Um. Seventy. Seventy one. And. Uh, seventy four uh be moved from the non-substantive. Section to the substantive section. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, can you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Akus?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nice?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair.
Um, if there aren't any further changes or motions uh to move sub non-substantive to the substantive pile. Um, I think we're ready for the roll call. Uh, everybody comfortable with that? Uh, please call the roll call on the main underlying motion.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Akus?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nice?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair.
So at this point, I think that the um. The next fastest way from A to B um would be, so with those. Those four log numbers that were just pulled out, um, you could provide me a direction that you would like to strike those provisions. We don't need to go and like. Look at what needs to be struck. I I can just strike those from the log number. So if you wanted to make one motion that gave that direction, um, or you could give direction on each one individually, it's up to you. But I think if you resolve those four. Then we can go to the recommended motion number two. Those four will be taken care of and then you can um wrap up the sub, the other substantive.
All right, um, before we do that, let me ask you a question a- as the planner. Um. A lot of my motivation uh for those amendments uh is uh that they potentially. Can apply to residential properties and cups. They didn't apply to residential property and cups, which I think the preamble to um nineteen point oh four point oh one A. Indicates, you know, um. Uh, I'm not giving a legal opinion on that. That's that's what motivated me and the Herzl. Then personally, I I'm kind of in favor of discretion on the town center PBZ commercial office zone, B zones. Because uh, you know, those uh have so many moving parts. And, you know, you want the discretion of the CBD and um. Architects like uh Commissioner Perez and Nice. So I don't know what way to to go on that, to ask the council to give direction. Or clarification that nineteen point oh four point oh one oh doesn't apply to residentially zoned properties or cups. So that it doesn't undercut all. Discretion or whether to uh for me to make a motion to say uh this is too broad, I think, in my opinion. Of uh discretion uh when it's going to apply the residentially zoned properties.
So if it helps, um, part of. So those standards that we're talking about today in chapter nineteen oh four, those specifically apply in commercial zones. Um, in some instances that are very rare, there's a property that or a property owner that owns a parcel in one zone and a parcel in another zone. And the specific provision that allows the sharing of parking is not. Tied to the to the zone, it's tied to if if it's a an adjacent use. And so it's a very. Uh, a very specific situation where you would have a property owner that owns. One property in the B zone and then one in the R eight point six um zone. Um, or sorry, eight point four. Uh, but i- if you have like a a single family zone next to the commercial zone, i- it's a rare occurrence. So that. Discretion, the the specific instance that you're referencing here is maybe more idiosyncratic than would happen elsewhere. Um, I mean, it it could happen, um, but there are, there are only so many places where a. And it really doesn't have to do with an existing conditional use permit. It has to do with, there's. One use that spans two zones. Um, it's kind of an artifact of an older zoning map. Um, so tho- those kinds of things, that might help with some of that. I think to answer your first question. It really is up to you if you wanted to recommend striking it today. I will say recommend striking, recommending striking it today. As I mentioned earlier, that's um. Beyond the scope of the project that was uh assigned to the Planning Commission. And so that recommendation is kind of above and beyond what we were asked to do. Um, that doesn't necessarily mean don't do it. It's just. Something to consider as part of this. You could add it to the parking lot and we'll keep track of that. And then that would open up an avenue for you to pick this up as you consider the docket for um next year. Um, you can, the Planning Commission can make um recommendations for the docket, and that's your way of asking the council to assign a project to you. Um, that's a, that's another path forward. So it's how however you would, you think the best way to move forward would be. You can make the recommendation tonight, or you can keep it in the parking lot and come back to it as you consider your next docket proposal.
Is there a way that this question, because I know that it's outside of the strict purview uh that we're looking at, and I kind of sprang it on and it's a little different.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and part of me doesn't want to get rid of all the discretion, but I am worried about the residential code. Is this something that we can uh? Save until, I mean, are we going to adopt the substantive tonight or in two weeks?
The, so the substantive amendments are recommended, a- as the recommended motion is laid out now, they would be placed into the parking lot. Um, those substantive amendments would not be incorporated into the draft that you would eventually recommend to the City Council. Any of those substantive amendments that that parking lot is something that we'll bring back to the Planning Commission. Um, in two thousand and twenty six for you to consider, again, formulating a docket request to the council to add that to your work plan. Um, without having that council direction, it it's tough because they really set the work plan for the Planning Commission. And so. The the docket is the avenue by which you can make that request.
All right, um, you know, I think that I'll then just uh, I'll go with putting them in the parking lot so that we can dress them next year. Uh, and have more time and thought about um. Keeping them away from the Residential Development Code, but then retaining the discretion for the other zones. I think maybe that's what I'd like to do. Uh, and give a little bit more thought on that for everyone.
Great, um, well, then, i- if that's the case, then we wouldn't need an additional action for those because you've moved those to the substantive. Um, I'll share my screen uh to bring up uh recommended motion number two. Um, and this would resolve all of those non-substantive. Um, and put them in the parking lot for us to bring back um later.
Okay, do I have a a motion from a Commissioner uh? According to uh the screen there?
I'd like to move to place any substantive amendments in the Planning Commission parking lot for consideration prior to the Planning Commission making its recommendation. On the annual docket in twenty sixteen, twenty twenty six, I can.
Uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Akus on the substantive. Uh, amendments and uh a second by Commissioner Nice. Do we have any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Akus.
Um, I'm wondering, Adam, if you could uh or Allison, just go over the docket dates one more time?
Mm-hmm.
Because it says docket in twenty twenty six. I'm like, like, we're going to talk about it in twenty twenty six to put on the twenty seven docket or what?
Yes.
Yes.
So um, the annual docket, the application window is open during the month of September every year. Um, and so it's currently open. Um. You, this, the items in the parking lot, we would bring back to you probably in the summer of twenty twenty six for you to consider what you would like to. Submit as your docket application. Um, and when I say your, I mean the Planning Commission's docket application. Um, and then that would then go before the council before the end of the year there. I mean, the even.
Commissioner Thompson wanted to, sorry, Chair Thompson wanted to. Address this next year, like. I don't know, I don't think we call it legislatively, but uh in the planning commission. As opposed to say that we're gonna address it in the future, like twenty twenty seven, then he would need to do that by the end of this week.
Correct, yeah.
The rest, we would talk about docketting as with the rest of our docket items to be considered in twenty seven.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure everyone's clear.
Yes, that would be, that would be the avenue to get it on the docket now. I, we'll talk about this when when you get the docket at the end of October. Um, but the the work plan for twenty twenty six is already. Pretty full. And so the likelihood that anything that is submitted. Were through the docket were to get added to that work plan, the council would need to find that to be a really compelling um. Case to get it, to move it to the front of the queue. Um, so. That's just the reality that we're working in with our our work plan as it is, yeah.
Um, Adam, this is Chair Thompson, and I. I have a question. Uh, reading all of the proposed amendments by Nice, um. At myself and Commissioner uh Perez and Gibson, uh, does this? Do these changes in the code that we're going to have meet uh the requirements and the intent of twelve twenty with this much discretion?
It. The the draft that was presented on the tenth, um, the draft that was made available for public comment was reviewed by both staff and our legal team. Um, for, to make sure that it did comply with twelve ninety three. for, to make sure that it did comply with twelve ninety three. We'll need to do that again before the council takes their final action on it. A cursory glance through it, we should, we should still be good there, but we still need to have that legal review before we do the, take the final action on it.
Okay.
What's the ramification if there is a code section that doesn't comply?
Well, that would be a bummer because then any decision that we would make, and Kim might want to help answer this too, but any decision that we would make based on that code could be subject to appeal. And then I see Kim popped on, so I'll, I'll let the lawyer do the, do the talking here.
The, the omnibus ordinance that this will be included in could be appealed. And so that would stop us right there and we'd have to re-review it. And then any application that had, I think someone would say arbitrary and capricious standards could also be, any application could be appealed on that basis individually. One would go to the growth board, one would go to hearing examiner in court.
And as a follow on, just, this is one of our, this is still, this is one of our third legislative project with the planning commission. That, that kind of legal review is pretty standard. When we bring forward an ordinance to the city council, it gets a review by the city attorney's office to make sure that it's, that it satisfies those requirements. So this isn't like something that we're just doing for this. We do it every time.
Okay. Any other further discussion on the substantive amendments and the motion that's pending?
Just a comment on the, just adding some color based on some conversations we had in the past. It's not everything here would necessarily make its way to the docket neck, after next summer. It would be, there are a handful of items coming up in twenty twenty six. I believe that these would also could get resolved under at that time. So it's kind of a mixed bag of what would be in the docket versus is, would be a part of our twenty twenty six work plan that's already in place. Is that correct?
Yeah. And, and the idea of having a parking lot is not, we're probably going to do, keep a running list as we work through more projects like this, just because there's a lot of times that ideas come up that are good ideas, but are outside of our scope. And so we can have a way of maintaining a list as we go forward to make sure that those ideas aren't lost. But we don't get bogged down when we have a timeline that we need to keep. Yeah.
Excuse me, Chair. I just received a message and the staff would like to ask for a five minute recess to confer with legal counsel briefly, and then we'll come right back.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thanks.
We'll take a five minutes. Let's see, it is six fifty four. We'll take a break until seven. It's now seven ten and the meeting's back in session. We have pending the motion to place the substantive amendments into the parking lot. Is that correct, Adam?
Yes, that, that is the motion. I wanted to, before you made, before you took the final vote on that motion, want to provide some clarification about the parking lot. We also talked about the docket a little bit, so I wanted to, again, just before you make this decision, make sure that you. We also talked about the docket a little bit, so I wanted to, again, just before you make this decision, make sure that you kind of know all of the parameters of what that decision entails. So the, anything that's placed in the, in the parking lot is something that, that's not added to the docket. It's not added to your recommendation to the council yet. That would take a separate action from the planning commission, and it would take an action from the planning commission and not an individual. So anything that the planning commission moves forward as a docket proposal, it would have to be taken by the planning commission as a whole, and rather than as an individual. And, and voting to put something in the parking lot tonight does not create a, a docket application and wouldn't play, wouldn't make this part of your recommendation on the docket. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear before we move forward. Also, any, the nature of our work plan right now is incredibly booked up. So we have, we have some upcoming work on compliance with a hearings board decision that's going to take up the first half of 2026. And then hot on the heels of that, we'll, we'll need to begin working on our shoreline master program update, which is the set of regulations for the shoreline code, for the shoreline environment, rather. That's expected to be a pretty major project, and that's a, an update that's mandated by state law. So that, that's another one that we will need to do. There's also a few other state bills that we'll need to comply with that have already been passed. And then there's also, also the possibility that more state bills will be passed that we'll need to comply with. So all of that is to say that anything, when we start looking at the docket, anything moving forward to the council, realistically, the, it won't get on the work plan for the planning commission and for CPD until likely 2029 or 2030, just by nature of what's already, what's already assigned and what we need to do for compliance with the state law. So as you're thinking about what things might be placed in the parking lot, that's, that's really a long-term list. It's not something that would be, that would be rolling forward anytime soon. So just, I wanted to make sure that you were fully aware that what, what the action taken by this motion is doing is not creating a work plan item for next year. It's not really creating a work plan item for a long time because of the things that we already have on our work plan. So.
Let me ask you this. Let's say one of us has a discreet issue or something we're talking about now. Is it going to be better for them to just file a proposed code amendment for the docket that's due at the end of this month? And if the planning commission adopts that and it goes forward, is, is that going to likely get considered or reviewed or come back to the planning commission before the huge parking lot?
I won't say it's better or worse. I'll, I'll avoid a value judgment on that. That's for you to decide. And any, any member of the planning commission can individually submit a docket proposal, and the planning commission can then consider that as part of their recommendation on the docket. Anything that's, that's submitted at this point, because of all of those projects that I just outlined that are already on our work plan, is likely, the, the recommendation from staff on that, given our staffing levels, will likely be 2029 or 2030, again, because we already have these like major projects that are on our work plan. So those, anything that would be submitted this year is likely going to have that same kind of timeline. It would be up to an individual planning commissioner if they wanted to do that on their own, and then the planning commission could consider that as part of their recommendation. But that application window does close on September 30th, so it's, I see Jeff jumped on the screen here. He definitely has.
Chair, if I may, for the record, Jeff Thomas with CPD. To answer that question a little bit more directly, my recommendation to the commission is if there's changes you want to make to this omnibus ordinance, you do it now while you have the matter in front of you and the ordinance in front of you, and then make that recommendation to the city council. What Adam's trying to get at here is the, the work program is layer upon layer upon layer upon layer, as we know it today. And last year, during the docketing process last year, I told the city council, when the docket was in front of them, that anything they docketed in 2024, they were probably making a decision for the next city council, three years down the road, to take something up that they may not necessarily be interested in taking up. And I'm going to be telling the city council and the planning commission, for that matter, the exact same thing again this year, and that's what Adam's telling you right now. Anything that gets, anything that makes it through the docket process and is approved by city council this year, it is going to be, and I, I mean, I can't even make this up. It sounds ridiculous, but I can't make it up. It is going to be years before it sees daylight in a legislative review process. So my strong recommendation to you is that if there's changes you're interested in contemplating with this omnibus ordinance, do it while the omnibus ordinance is in front of you, which is tonight, which is October 8th, and work through those items as efficiently as possible and make your recommendations to city council.
Okay.
Did, did you, you provided us at the beginning of the year, there were some slides about work program. Do you have like a comprehensive list that we can look at? That you could.
We do. We, I'm not sure if we have that available for tonight, but that's certainly something staff is happy. And I believe we provide that to the commission on an annual basis anyway, as part of the docketing process. So Commissioner, staff will provide that to you. Yes, we can provide it in advance of the docketing briefing this year. So you have that, and we're always happy to answer questions about it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, Commissioner Perez.
If I could just ask one question, Commissioner Perez, so just wanted to, just reiterating back something that I heard earlier, it's in the interest of the, of the, of the city staff to not have to address these items on an ongoing every six-month basis based on some of the temporary provisions in place right now. So if we were to work on this now, that is actually a benefit to the city and the city staff, correct?
That.
Can, can you quantify that?
I would generally agree with that, yes.
Okay. And, and how much of a burden is it? I mean, we talked, if there's any way you can sort of quantify that?
A burden in terms of renewing interim regs?
Yeah.
Sure. I mean, it costs the city time and money when we have to renew interim regs continuously. We have to go through the noticing process for public hearing. We need to schedule that with the city council. We, we need to write the agenda bills, the ordinances. You know, we have to go through the process. It, it, it takes time and money from the city. We have to publish in the newspaper. It's, it, it all costs. It all costs money and it all takes time. There's no doubt about it.
So there's an efficiency equation here by doing this now. Thank you.
One comment and then a question. The comment is, I remember asking a couple of years ago if we magically had more staff, if we could get more done, and the answer was no because of the legislative review process, because there's only so many of these meetings that we can have, and you have to do the reading and then the this and then the that. And so that's the comment. You shared that before. It's tough to make this go faster. And then my question is, can we have subcommittees that do work, like of two people? I'm wondering, just so that we can get to a same space on some of this stuff faster as a commission, since these meetings in the, of themselves are one of the constraints that we're dealing with in terms of moving things along. I'm just wondering if we, we don't want to consider some subcommittee work to, to get us on the same page quicker.
So to be, to be perfectly candid, I'm not certain our staff size has the ability to support subcommittees at this point in time. So I, you know, this omnibus ordinance.
Does staff have to be there? Like if it's just two people? Can that be a subcommittee? Is it official public meeting? Or can we have working meetings?
You would not have a quorum with just two.
Are you, are you suggesting just two commissioners get together to discuss something? Is that, maybe I misheard that question.
Maybe you just answered my question. Thanks.
I will say this, though, in the, in the spirit of efficiency, this omnibus ordinance was actually Adam's brainchild. He gets credit for it. And it, it really was intended to be, you know, a, a project of efficiency to be able to roll several sets of interim regulations into one permanent regulation ordinance that would allow us to roll a bunch of these interim regs off the books. And with the way the subject matters aligned, we did determine with our city attorney's office that we could move that one, this, you know, this forward as a package for you. So anyway, so, you know, here we are, and so I would just encourage you here just to close this out. We, we've maybe talked here about the administration of this here for a little bit, but if you want to discuss some of the things that you're interested in taking a look at and amending, I would encourage you to get working on that now, and we can continue that at your next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. With that being said, I think then I will propose. Adam, how do I do, propose that we adopt a substantive amendment to be presented to the council with this bill?
What you could do, because you've, you've got a motion now to take all of the substantive amendments and place them in the parking lot. If you wanted to discuss specific log numbers, you could pull those out now, just like we did with the last motion, and then we could go through those individually. If they're the, the four, sixty-eight, seventy, seventy-one, and seventy-four that relate to parking, you could do those as like a single, again, you could give me directions specifically that you want to recommend striking those. If there's other ones that you want to pull out, we could do that now. But the log numbers and pulling those out for further discussion would be the most efficient way to get there.
All right. Why don't I go first then? The, what I'm going to do, and this is going to be log sixty-eight, seventy, and sixty-one, I'm going to slightly modify it. I'm going to propose a motion that MIC, log sixty-eight, MICC nineteen point oh three point oh two oh B four regarding parking requirements, and nineteen point oh four oh, oh four oh B nine, log seventy, and nineteen point oh four point oh four oh E, also regarding parking reductions, be withdrawn and that the variances or ability to reduce parking in these sections is eliminated as it for residentially zoned properties. Does that make sense? Well, yeah. Yeah, this is a motion to amend.
This is, I, I think there's kind of two steps here. We can probably remove those from the motion on the table and then come back with another motion to do what you say with those, with those three. But I think if we take those off the table now, we can resolve this motion and start a new one with what you just described.
Okay, but I'm thinking that others might.
Yeah, there's probably other adjustments here, too.
So as a clarification, so the motion that was made, we would need a second for, that would pull those out and give me direction to strike those, those sections. That, that can accomplish what you're trying to do with one, one action, I think, if you wanted to, if there's a second for that.
Is there a second motion? To my motion?
I guess we have to second it to discuss it, right?
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll second it. I'm going to have some comments.
Is there any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Perez.
I'm sorry, just can, can we, I just need a clarification in terms of what are we doing at this very moment in terms of discussion? So if, if I was to remove and withdraw some items, is, is now the right time to do that?
Yes.
Not, not yet. Okay. So, so we're going to do individual motions and then individual withdrawals?
Individual commissioners, really.
Okay, all right. Yes, thank you.
We'll do mine, and my three are to, basically, I don't think they apply, but apparently they do. Make it so that these sections that allow parking reductions or variances between zero and twenty-five percent don't apply to residentially zoned properties. They would only apply to the commercial PVC B and town center properties.
Okay, Sean, we're not doing the specifics right now, right? We're just removing these from the motion that's on the table.
The, the motion as drafted now would both remove them from that main motion that's already been made, and it would do the second part of that, what Chair Thompson is recommending.
Okay. I need to hear the second part again for the minutes. Right now I have removed log numbers sixty-eight, seventy, and seventy-one from the parking lot for further consideration and discussion. If we're adding something on to that, I need to hear it again.
And it would be that they don't, and to clarify that they don't apply to residentially zoned parcels. Is that right?
Exactly. Right.
I thought that was a discussion, like a different motion.
Yeah, I think we should have a second motion if we're going to amend these items. I think we should just have. Yeah, I think we should just have this motion as I drafted it to remove log numbers sixty-eight, seventy, and seventy-one from the parking lot for further consideration and discussion. We could vote on that, and then we can have a second motion to talk about what should happen with those items as far as a further amendment.
All right. Do we have that motion or do I need to make it?
I have the motion. We have a second. We just need a vote.
Okay. Any discussion pulling them out of the parking lot? None. Okay. Please call the, the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Cuse?
Hi.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nice?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair.
Now, what?
Should we just go, you know, finish with me and then I move to the next commissioner?
Well, since we have that motion on the table about the substantive, I think we probably should get through that motion and then circle back to a, further adjustments on direction to staff on the omnibus legislation.
All right. So we'll go to each commissioner and ask them which they want to pull out of the substantive parking lot?
Yeah.
Is that how you'd like to do it?
Yeah. Let's, let's resolve this motion and then, and then pick it up a new clean motion after this one's done.
Okay, let's see. So I'm just going to make notes so I don't get lost. At sixty-eight, seventy, and seventy-one. Who would like to go next? How about you, Vice Chair?
Nothing from me. Commissioner Perez has jumped in. Chair, I'm, I'm ready to go if you, if, now the timing is convenient.
Yes, Commissioner Perez, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. Thank you. So I make a motion to withdraw the following provisions from the omnibus or from the log. If I need additional information, please let me know, but I would like to withdraw log number seventy-five, log number eighty, eighty-four, log number eighty-six, and log number one oh three. The, the basis for that is the, the information provided by the staff clarified the, the questions or the, the intent to mid-satisfaction. So I'm withdrawing those, those questions. Thank you.
Okay, so you're, you're totally withdrawing them, right?
From substantive, yes.
Okay, you're, you're not pulling them out to then further amend them or have them adopted. Okay.
I am withdrawing them.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Cuse?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nice?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner. Commissioner, well, Gibson doesn't have any. How about Commissioner Cuse?
Nothing for me.
Okay. How about you, Commissioner Nice?
Just a question, maybe for you. Chair, item forty five also dealt with parking. I don't know if your change ties into that.
Well, I, I didn't include that, I don't think, because
are we still good with the range of parking numbers?
I don't, I, I don't. I, I limited mine to the residential properties. I, I don't have a problem with the discretion in the other zones, and I think that, let's see, nineteen point eleven is that's town center. And so, let's see, I, I had the same one at you, actually, I think. That was, so I, I didn't add it or pull it out because.
I was personally satisfied with the answer and, and I don't have an amendment on that one, so.
If you're leaving the parking lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Forty, forty five's not in the substantive list, I don't believe, right?
I, I, I think that's fine.
Correct, yeah.
And I don't, I don't have anything else, then.
Okay. I think that that it's, it's just me, right? Okay, so I will now make the motion no, I, I, I don't. Do we now do the main motion on the substantive and then come back to mine, you think?
Yeah, I think that'd be the cleanest way to do it.
Okay, well, we have the main motion, and we just need a vote, right?
Correct.
Okay, please call the, the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Cuse?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nice?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, this, I guess, would be the final motion. This would be me. I move that we add to the motion or to the council for, how do I word that?
So I think the easiest way to do it is you can ask me to resolve log numbers sixty eight, seventy, and seventy one to clarify that they, this wouldn't apply to residentially zoned properties. And then I can, I'll, I'll draft that up and you can see it before the eighth.
Okay. I'm going to move that log number sixty eight, seventy, and seventy one be adopted with directions to staff to reconcile them so that the variances or reductions in parking minimums do not apply to residentially zoned properties, but would continue to apply to town center, PBC, B and CO properties. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Cuse?
Yes. Okay, let's go back to discussion.
I, I have a question because the staff had, like, every single one of these amendments, you had said this is needed for a House bill. Could you talk about the ramifications of doing what the chair is suggesting? Do you think we would still be in compliance with state laws if that was done?
We would need to have the, it'll need to go through the legal review before that goes to the council, but I don't see anything in this that would conflict with the bills that we're addressing with the with this omnibus legislation. The, the only thing that I did point out earlier is that this is, this wasn't something that the council specifically asked for a recommendation on, but this is your recommendation, and so you can make it to the city council if you'd like.
And I guess my one final follow up is does this have any overlap with the hearings board complaint about our comp plan update? No?
It shouldn't, no.
Just want to make sure we're clean on that. Thank you. Sorry, I'm ready to go now.
No, no. Any other questions or discussions on just that one specific motion? Please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Cuse?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nice?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair.
Now we move to other business. Is there a staff report this evening or any update you want to give us?
I do have a brief one. I just wanted to go over the upcoming meetings that are planned and, and some potential changes that we'll need to make a little further out. So right now we have meetings scheduled October eighth and October twenty second. At the October eighth meeting, we will continue the public hearing on the item we're considering tonight. You may make a decision on that item that night if we're ready to do so. And then on October twenty second, we will be reviewing the docket and the items submitted through the docketing process during the month of September. The, the planning commission will need to make a recommendation to the city council that night on those docket items. We just have a one-touch review for the docket because it's a pretty quick process. In November, the regular meeting is currently scheduled the day before Thanksgiving, so we will be looking to reschedule that and hold a special meeting in November. Still TBD exactly on the dates with that. I'll follow up with more information on that at the next meeting. That's all I have for the report. Thank you.
I, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate the work you guys are, are doing, and I think Jeff made it clear, too, just, you know, how crushing it is. It's unfortunate that we're getting all these one amendment after another, but this omnibus bill, and I looked through that and all your comments, it's pretty incredible. Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to add the same thing. So, so Adam, you know, extraordinary clarity in terms of what you, what you've been putting down. And I'm sure it's not just you, and maybe it is, but, but also I just want to tip a hat. Thank you very much for, for putting in the extra time. I know that my own submittal was, was later than, than anticipated. I appreciate your feedback and appreciate the, the clear and concise input. So thank you very much.
Okay, it's seven thirty eight and the meeting is adjourned. Please stay in your seats until the camera is off.